2025 to order at 6:37. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Troxel, would you please take the roll call?
Yes, Madam President. Councilman Tom Schmidt?
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley?
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis?
Here.
Councilman Caleb Johnson?
Present.
Councilman Rob Getzloff?
Present.
Attorney David Ostrom?
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson?
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer?
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara?
Here.
Park Superintendent John Novosich?
Here.
IT Andy Garcia slash Robbie Hanson?
Present.
NICE Engineering Neil Simstad?
Here.
Public Works Director Chad Nandorf?
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen?
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman?
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal? Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel, here.
Thank you. The Water Works Board consists of three members, Kevin Conley, Tom Schmidt, and myself, Robin Arvenitis. First on the agenda, we have the minutes of the December 11th, 2024, and December 30th, 2024, public meetings.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved three to zero. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President. Motion to approve claims?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Claims carry three to zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Are there any staff reports regarding the Water Works Board? Any staff reports?
No reports.
Are there any council reports regarding the Water Works Board?
No.
No reports. Thank you. There is no old business. There is no new business for the Water Works Board. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Water Works Board? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Stormwater Board meeting for Wednesday, January 15th, 2025. The roll call is different than the Water Works Board. It is also a three-member board, and it consists of myself, Caleb Johnson, Councilman Tom Schmidt, and Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis. First thing on the agenda is the minutes of the last meeting, which there are none. Second agenda item is claims, which there are none. And the next item on the agenda is reports. Are there any agenda items, or are there any reports from staff members with regard to the Stormwater Board?
No reports, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Are there any reports from council members with regard to the Stormwater Board?
No.
None.
No reports. There is no old business. There is no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Stormwater Board? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 15th, 2025. The time is 6:40 PM. For the roll call, the Redevelopment Commission is comprised of the entire council, so we are all back with this roll call, and also our advisor from the Lake Central School Board, Nicole Kelly, is with us. Good evening, Nicole. The minutes of the December 11th and December 30th public meetings?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is five zero. Any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure the board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is five zero. Any reports from staff on redevelopment?
I do have one quick report, Mr. Conley.
Gorman?
For the property 22 West Juliette, just west of Town Hall. We are soliciting for new appraisals or updated appraisals for that property since we need to go out to bid again, and I have since received one and still waiting for the second one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, we'll get that in the coming week and go back out for bid soon thereafter. Any reports from council members on redevelopment?
None.
Nope, okay. We don't have any old business or new business. Anything from the floor? Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call the Utility Board meeting for Wednesday, January 15th at approximately 6:42. The roll call stays the same as the Redevelopment Commission. The first item on the agenda is the minutes of December 11th, 2024, and the minutes of December 30th, 2024, public meetings.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, and we're a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel, for Utility Board?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, and we're a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Reports. Mr. Gorman, any reports on utilities?
No reports, Mr. Schmidt.
Any reports from the council members on utilities?
No report.
No.
No report. We have old business, new business. At this time, I think business from the floor. Any business from the floor regarding utilities? Any business from the floor regarding utilities? This means adjourned. We'll move right into the town council meeting.
I'd like to call the town council meeting to order for Wednesday, January 15th, 2025, at 6:43. The roll call will be the same as the Utility Board, so we'll go on to the minutes of the December 3rd, 2024, and December 11th, 2024, and December 30th, 2024, public meeting. Pleasure the board.
So, both of us, President?
Second. Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel? No additional claims, Mr. President. Pleasure the board.
Motion to pay the claims?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Gorman, I will do the roll call on staff reports, please.
Sure, no problem, Mr. Getzloff. Fire Chief Patterson, reports?
Just one report. Just wanted to let the council know that we just took possession of our Polaris vehicle, and then at this point, it is staged at Station 3, and we'll be further getting lights and sirens put on in the next week or so. So, thank you everyone for your support with that.
Excellent.
That's all I got.
Deputy Fire Chief Meyer?
Nothing to report.
Police Chief Sormas?
Nothing to report.
Deputy Chief McNamara?
Nothing to report.
Park Superintendent John Novosich?
No report.
Town Engineer Neil Simstad?
No report.
Public Works Director Chad Nandorf?
Nothing to report.
Director of Operations Andrew Hanson?
No reports.
No reports.
Okay, thank you. Council members, any reports? No, okay.
None at this time.
Okay. At this time, we do have a presentation, the Logan's Love donation presented to the Fire Department for Project Lifesaver.
Hi, Georgiana Glavis, 1727 Chelsea Street. I'm just here to introduce Logan's Love. You're all familiar with us, I hope. And here is Nicole.
Okay.
Hi, how's everybody doing?
Good. Warm. Are you warm?
Warm. Right now, I am. From outside, yes.
Good.
Okay, I want to tell you guys, our hearts are so happy to be here today, and I know I'm short.
Want to take it out, Pete? Take the mic out?
Yeah.
Our hearts are so happy to be here today, and to be able to present the Shererville Fire Department with extra funds for Project Lifesaver. This means so much to me and our entire organization to have this opportunity. Project Lifesaver is near and dear to my heart. My son Logan had Project Lifesaver, and I know firsthand how important and life-saving this tracking device can be. So today, we give you this check in honor of Logan, in honor of autism, and also in our mutual love of community. We came in front of you almost three years ago now, and we cannot thank you enough for giving Logan's Love our very first start with the Autism Walk, and believing in us and our commitment to the special needs community in Lake County. When we came before you, we knew this was something needed here in our hometown and county, but we never grasped how much until we dived in. We gave ourselves the goal of supplying Tri-Town with Ben's Blue Bags and educating the first responders on how to handle situations with special needs individuals. Before the walk started, we reached that goal and turned it into a county-wide initiative. We now added Project Lifesaver, and we equipped Dyer with a transmitter to be a Project Lifesaver location, which is huge for Lake County. We are not stopping there. We will continue to finish adding Ben's Blue Bags throughout the county and adding more Project Lifesaver locations, and we will continue to bring smiles and inclusion to our beautiful, amazing special needs families as well. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts and are so honored you said yes to us three years ago, and hope you continue to support us. We also hope you show up to our events and show that you too all support autism and Logan's Love, and most importantly, to honor a little boy who impacted so many with absolutely no words and united an entire county. Thank you again. I say this always, and I will continue to say this. This is for Logan, this is for Tri-Town, this is for the community, and this is for autism. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you again for all your hard work. At this time, we're going to hear from Kathy LaRue from the St. John Township.
Hello.
Hi, Kathy.
Hi, thanks for letting us come tonight and on the agenda. I have with me the St. John Township Attorney Adam Seedia. Kind of, we're tag teaming here a little bit. What I'm here to talk to you about is about these township cemetery. I think all of you are aware that there is a township cemetery that's man. And I don't want to get a little bit of possibility of the town being involved in the project I have going on or I'm going to be involved with. So, I just want to give you a little bit of an update of what's going on in the cemetery. I don't know if you know where it's located. It's just, it's east of here, just down the street from Halls of St. George. There's a church, and it's up on a hill. There has been an erosion issue at that cemetery for, I can see back with paperwork from 1968 where they were trying to address it with grass, foliage, and it continues to erode. I have, in the last few years, I met out, there is someone that was buried in a pauper grave, and I cannot locate her. She was in an unmarked grave, and it was 1994. She should be in a vault. We cannot find her. The other issue, another issue is along the west side of that cemetery where there is massive erosion, there are graves that are at the very end, and those, I've had someone come out from a cemetery, and he looked, and it's basically, the remains of them are probably down where the hill. So, I eventually was able to finally meet with DNR in December, and that was my first step to get some help moving forward. The cemetery, it's, obviously, the erosion is not what they thought could help it. It's still eroding. If something's not done, that cemetery won't be here someday, right? And in that cemetery, we have, there's a Revolutionary War soldier buried, and his gravesite is always kept up by the Daughters of the American Revolution, and then there is someone buried from the Mexican War and three Civil War soldiers. So, it's important for historic reasons as well to preserve the cemetery. So, when I met with DNR, they, he, there's a couple things that he, direction he gave me. One is, we need to have someone come out with a ground penetrating radar to see if we can find where that one pauper grave is, as well as what we're dealing with along the side of that west side of the cemetery. The other thing is, is we talked about various kinds of retaining walls or retaining wall. It seems like that's the only solution that we could have. So, I ended up, he left. That was the direction, and if, whatever plan we go forward with, I have to submit papers to DNR for them to review and approve. But, one of the things is when I had an engineer come out, and I met with the engineer, and he's looking to have a geotech engineer come out to see what kind of soil that they're exactly dealing with, and what kind of retaining wall that we can put up there. This obviously is going to cost a lot of money, and, and one of the things that Adam and I have discussed is if this is made a historic site, the cemetery is made a historic site, then that would open up opportunity for various kinds of grants. And I met with Legacy Foundation. The CEO there told me, she said, number one, they haven't really had anything from Shererville, and it would be a project that they would definitely be interested in. The other thing she said was, if it's a historic site, then that gives more value to them giving grant money. So, what, what we're looking to do is just kind of give you, and like I said, I'm in overview, giving you the overview. Adam is going to tell you a little bit of how the town could be involved to help with this project. We're not looking for you to make any decisions tonight, just to be able to answer, have any questions answered, if any come up tonight, as well as just to give you some information and be able to make an informed decision.
Thank you, Kathy. The reason I'm here, not just to watch what Kathy says, it's to talk a little bit about what the township could possibly see from the town of Shererville. Because this cemetery is located within your boundaries, it is within your jurisdiction. In my other role as Dyer Town Attorney, I oversaw and implemented the adoption of the Historic Preservation Commission and the Historic Districts in that town, so I'm intimately familiar with the process. So, if this is something the town would be interested in, and the township would pretty much need to have the town designate the cemetery as a historic district to be eligible to receive many of these grants, the town would need to adopt a Historic Preservation Ordinance, which would then set up a commission, and the town can create however many districts of however many properties it wants. The cemetery can very well be the only parcel in the only district, and that would be enough for a Historic Preservation Commission to have jurisdiction in town here. It can be a commission of between three to seven members, and what essentially its function is, is if any modification to an exterior, a street-facing exterior of any structure is done, in addition to the usual permitting process, the applicant would, either the contractor or the owner, would have to obtain what's called a certificate of authenticity from the commission. In other words, if, for example, in downtown Crown Point or downtown Valpo, if a building owner wanted to make a really outrageous modification to the exterior of the property, the commission would have the authority to say, no, we're not approving these plans. You have to stay within the bounds of what the district is to preserve its historic character. That's essentially how it functions. But the fact of having the cemetery in a historic district would help tremendously for the township to obtain grants from private sources to maintain the cemetery, particularly to build the retaining wall. Kathy, or I could answer any questions you might have about this process. I can tell you, in Dyer, Indiana Landmarks, which is a private organization that assists municipalities with these, has been extremely helpful in the process. I can put you in touch with Blake Swihart from there if you want more information on this, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have either now, or, you know, call me or email me, and I'll be happy to address them then.
Council members, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
One question. Has the township, and maybe some of our staff members, has the township ever been in contact with the town about the erosion problem? Like our public works, our town engineer, or anything?
No, I have not. I actually, quite honestly, Tom, never even thought about that. And if there's some direction from you as far as doing that as well, you know, I would, I would be all, I would be in favor of it. I would thank you for that.
I mean, I would think, since it's in Shererville property, that our Public Works Department and our engineer should know about it, and at least go out there and take a look at it.
I think that's a great, if you want to do that, that's a great idea.
I mean, that's just my opinion. I mean...
Yeah, Kathy, if you want to get with Chad and Jim?
Sure.
And, you know, if there's something that, you know, we can do that's not costly, costly, you know, we might entertain that.
Okay, that would be great. And one of the things, and I thank you, thank you for that. I'm, you know, I think for me, the biggest thing was DNR and taking these first steps. So now that you know about this, I thank you for your support with that and being able to work with me, so, or seeing if we can work together. One of the things I did want to point out with the, I know I spoke to Jim about this, you have the Historical Society, and those same people could be on the Historic Preservation Commission. So you don't have to necessarily worry about soliciting any more, you know, additional people. It's just, they don't have the statutory authority, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I got some. I just wanted to clarify, Tom, you did say that it's a town of Shererville property. It's not. It's the township property. This is not a town of Shererville property.
Yeah, that's true. It's in the town of Shererville, but it's township property. The deed is in the name of the St. John Township.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought you, yeah, I thought you mentioned that it was in, it was in the town of Shererville's property.
It's in the town of Shererville. It used to be unincorporated when it was considered New Lennox, and then it was brought into the town of Shererville, and I, that's why you're getting involved as far as the Historic Preservation Commission, because I can't do that. That has to be in the town because it's in the town of Shererville.
Yeah, she basically, to help get her funding to fix the property, she would need us to pass an ordinance, you know, citing a historical preservation site, and I actually, Adam was kind enough to send me the ordinance, so I can get that off to our legal if you guys want to do that once we move a little bit farther forward. That'll be another, another meeting.
That's fine, Jim. Kathy, you know, another avenue, I was just thinking about this, is to call the surveyor's office since it's in unincorporated properties.
No, it's in Shererville.
Well, but it's unincorporated, though.
No.
No, it's not. It's in Shererville.
It's in the, it was. It used to be unincorporated. Now, it is in the town of Shererville, and that's where you, you're, you know, involved as far as possibly helping with this. I actually had a brief meeting with Surveyor Emerson today, and they're, well, the engineer that, for, that they have as well as who I'm working with, and so they're going to help. Because of the erosion, we have a plaid of survey. However, we're not sure exactly where those lines are. You just can't tell. So they're, they're kind of helping direct me with that.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, it's Burke Engineer, correct?
Yes, yeah, with Thomas Burke, yes.
Yes, Thomas Burke, yeah. Okay, good. I was just thinking about that while you were talking.
Well, thank you so much.
Well, thank you both for coming out tonight. I know it wasn't the warmest night to be out, but thank you.
Always happy to be here. Thank you.
All right, nice to see you, that's for sure. Okay, there is no old business, but under new business, consider acceptance of change order number three from Haas Construction Company Incorporated, in the credited amount of $45,000 for the BioSolid Storage Building Project. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Getzloff. Yeah, this is for the BioSolids project down at the wastewater treatment plant that's currently going on. The contractor submitted a request for information to our architect, as well as the town admin staff, and what they did was they substituted some of the wire mesh to go with a heavier duty mesh, and we ended up being able to get a credit back for that $45,000. So that's good news.
Okay, excellent. Pleasure the board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Consider the acceptance of the contract between the town of Shererville and Austin Kiper Jesus Highness PC Law Firm. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Getzloff. Yeah, this is the annual contract that we do every January with our town attorney, Mr. Ostrom.
Pleasure the board.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you all.
You're welcome, Mr. Ostrom. Consider acceptance of contract between the town of Shererville and NICE Engineering Incorporated. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Getzloff. Similar situation. This is for our town engineering services that we do every year in January.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. You're welcome. D, consider approval to purchase the right-of-way property located at 398 Kennedy Avenue, BP Midwest Product Pipeline Holdings LLC, in the amount of $42,100, and to authorize the town manager, the director of operations, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize execution of documents. Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project Phase Two. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Getzloff. I'm going to defer this to Mr. Hanson. Actually, the next three agenda items to Mr. Hanson.
Okay.
Yes, this is for the Kennedy Avenue Project. It's Phase Two, Parcel Six. Let me show it on the projector here. It says purple parcel here, right at Kennedy and Oak. This will be part of the intersection improvement that will have a traffic signal on it. This reflects the appraised value, $42,100, that we are purchasing from BP Pipeline.
Okay. Motion to approve? Second. A motion, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. E, consider approval to purchase property located at 1225 slash 1227 and 1231 slash 1233 Kennedy Avenue. From Stephen Law, in the amount of $31,800, authorize the town manager, director of operations, clerk treasurer, and the town attorney to finalize execution of the documents. Phase Two.
Yes, this is also for the Kennedy Avenue Project, Phase Two, Parcel Twenty-Three. It's shown on the projector here. It's right across from Public Works. It's this little purple sliver here. This reflects the appraised value plus the additional compensation for... This reflects the appraised value plus the additional compensation for some concrete work that they, the owner of the property, need to do in addition to make this accessible to the, for the driveway.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure, the board?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Letter F is, consider acceptance of the easement agreement between Maestro Industries Prism Painting and the town of Shererville for access to the relocation lift station facility and equipment of, to authorize the town manager, director of operations, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize execution of documents. Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project Phase Two also. Andy?
Yes, this is also for Kennedy Avenue project. It's kind of hard to see on here, but this is right just north of the BP parcel that we looked at. This hashed area here, we need to have this to have access to the relocation of the new lift station in order to provide access for some of the larger vehicles. We would have to get in there to do work on the lift station.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure, the board?
Just for clarification, there's no cost for the easement?
It's an access easement.
So it's just an access easement, and just something they're willing to give us?
Correct. And then also, could you authorize the town council president to sign this document in your motion, please?
Motion to approve as read and to authorize the town council president to execute all documents necessary.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Consider acceptance of donations of $5,173.99. Mr. Troxell?
Thank you, Mr. President. These donations were received in the month of December. The town hall offices received these in-kind donations for the month. Applewood Farms Ham/Turkey Breast, value $100. Bob the Builder, 23.6 ounces of Giordelli chocolates, 21.2 ounces of Ferrero Rocher chocolates. Approximate value in-kind is $55. Popa Heating and Cooling, one dozen donuts, value $15.99. Neese Engineering Albanese chocolates and candy tray, $25. Total Roofing and Construction Services, two pounds of gummy candies, four pounds of assorted chocolates, $48. Roxy and Mike Providence Real Estate, two dozen parlor donuts, $51.84. I'm getting hungry. IBW Local 697 Assorted Albanese Chocolates, $27.99. William Jarvis Homemade Cookies, valued at $20. B&amp;D Sewer donated some cookies, $40 value. Derek Gleason's from Providence Field Manager, Carol Ann's Fudge and Candies, $30. And Krillish Concrete donated a party tray, value of $24.99. Total Town Hall Offices donations, $438.81. To the Animal Control anonymously, two eight-pound bags of pro and sensitive food and cookies, in-kind value of $90. Alan Van Hooten, two cases of canned dog foods, value $30. Paula Unstrat, PetSmart gift card, value $50. Anonymously, we received two carriers' cat condo missing supplies, value $250. And Ryan Henchelwood Litterbox, litter, cat food, cat food PT MB blankets, $350 value. And anonymous Bambo Bones the Antler, in-kind $50. Also with the Animal Control, Dog Kennel, in-kind value $80. Total in-kind dollars to the Animal Control, 900 even. Jay Sinowski donated $100 monetary to the Animal Control. SouthCom received donations from Albert Jewelers, two boxes of 11.5 ounces of Fanny Mae Meltaways. That value was $29.98 for the SouthCom department. Wastewater Treatment Offices received from Neese Engineering Christmas party sponsor for wastewater treatment plant. That was a $200 value, was a total of in-kind to the wastewater treatment offices. Police Department received from Mike McGinnis, donated Bozo's Lunch for Police Day shift. That in-kind value was $150.39. Antonet Sellers, one box of chocolate-covered cherries, one box of Ande's Cream de Mint chocolates. That value is $5.98. Nelson Systems, 3.53 pounds tin Jacobson butter cookies. That value was $25.40. And Applewood Farms Frozen Ham and Turkey for needy families. That in-kind value was $99. Anonymously received crackers, cheese times two, cookies times two, Panino tray and popcorn tin, a value of $43.95. Panera Bread, 18 cold-box lunches for $248.22. Continuing with the Police Department, Hanson's Towing donated cookies trays, large bags of popcorn and candy. That value is $100. Neese Engineering, large Christmas party tray from Albanese. That value $61.99. Catherine Reiba, 13 trays of Subway sandwiches, trays of cookies, two packets of napkins, three bags of assorted condiments. In-kind value $1,477.98. Debbie Rassaw, a tray of cookies, in-kind value $21.98. Anonymously, cookies, brownies, donuts from Family Express, in-kind value $36.48. Estrich Family, basket of candy, value of $30. Albert's, many large bags of assorted candies. That value is $149.58. And the Crossroads donated annual exam to Dato, in-kind value $111.25. And the Karis Family, tray of homemade cookies. That value was $25. Total Police Department donations, $2,587.20. The Fire Department received from Applewood Farms, a 20-pound ham and turkey breast. That in-kind value was $150 total for the month. And the Willow Fund, Jocelyn Babich donated twice, one at $300 and one at $468 for the monetary total of $768. Recap, total in-kind donations received by the town was $4,305.99. Total monetary donations, $868 for the grand total of $5,173.99. Thank you.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. This time, I will take any business from the floor. Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.